Tonight, city council takes the first step in developing the yards. Parents of children with complex needs call for more support at school. And what has some residents in Wascana View mad at the city?
Live from our studios in Regina, this is CTV News.
Good evening with the below ground construction on Dootney Avenue complete. Regina City Council is looking to the next up of revitalizing the warehouse district, and that is developing the yards.
How do we measure success? To me, it means people actually go down there and use it, whether they walk there, take transit, or drive down there, and we need to be able to handle all of those things.
Council unanimously allowing administration to enter the first phase of development and initiating a competitive procurement process to select a qualified development partner or partners. Rumors have been circulating surrounding what could end up being built at the site, particularly a proposal for a new baseball stadium, but administration says the city isn't bound to those plans.
There's nothing in any kind of hold where the land has to be used for that purpose. It doesn't preclude its use, so there's nothing that council has said that would preclude it in the community plan or anything like that. So if somebody wanted to put forward a bid that included any kind of sports stadium, that would be allowed and be weighed.
Last year, the city, province, and federal government partnered together with $32 million to support redevelopment in the yards. Proposals are expected to include construction of one public park between 150 and 1,200 dwelling units, the planting of about 500 trees, and adhere to the area's official community plan. When Saskatchewan teachers in the province agreed to a new contract back in April, class complexity was, of course, a major issue. Well, parents of students with complex needs are not happy with results so far, saying there are still a lack of supports in schools. Hallie Mandrick has a story.
Erin Gerwing is home with her son Luca when she would typically be at work. Luca, who has autism, has been placed on a modified schedule due to a lack of full-time educational assistance at his school.
Many families are finding it impossible to have full-time jobs because somebody has to be on constant call. Somebody has to be able to go to the school on a moment's notice.
She's not the only one facing this issue. Rochelle Young says her son's EA support was recently taken away, forcing the second grader with autism to also shift to a modified schedule.
That month, as you can imagine, was incredibly stressful for us as we did not have any childcare lined up for our child. I cried a lot of tears, and I was incredibly angry that my child was being treated so unfairly because of a funding issue.
The Saskatchewan Teachers Federation says a lack of funding for educational assistance is causing significant strain on both teachers and students. And while the STF says recent changes to federal programs for some students have contributed to the issue, education falls under the jurisdiction of the province.
Ultimately, this is still the responsibility of the provincial government. We need to continue to see those improvements in funding, and last year was really encouraging to see that improvement in our per-student funding.
In a statement to CTV, the province says education is set to receive an increase of $186.4 million in the 2025-26 School Year Operating Fund, adding, quote, "Our government is working to ease the pressure and complexities in Saskatchewan classrooms through initiatives like the expansion of the specialized support classrooms to an additional 50 classrooms this year and funding for additional classroom complexity teachers through the recent collective bargaining agreement." For parents like Rochelle Young and Erin Gerwing, that can't come soon enough.
Imagine being overwhelmed to the point of panic and being told there was nowhere for you to go, no one for you to turn to, and to try harder.
They both want the necessary supports for both teachers and children, and will continue to advocate for that until it happens. Hallie Mandrick, CTV News, Saskatoon.
Controversy at the legislature today over MLA attendance. It began with the NDP criticizing the minister in charge of SAS Power for missing a meeting. The government quick to point a finger at the NDP leader's attendance record this session. Wayne Mantika has more.
The opposition was upset that SAS Power Minister Jeremy Harrison didn't attend a committee meeting at the legislature this week where SAS Power funding was discussed.
Last night, the minister responsible, Jeremy Harrison, and his officials failed to attend a scheduled Crown and Central Agencies Committee meeting. Now, let's be clear, the government picks the time of this meeting, they pick the day.
Harrison said he wasn't there because it wasn't necessary.
I think it's really important that people recognize what was going on here.
Harrison then questioned the whereabouts of the opposition leader.
I think I got one question about it from the opposition, from the leader of the opposition, who has showed up eight days of the last 23. I could only imagine the questions the premier would be getting standing here from you if he had missed, if he was only here for eight of 23 days. I can only imagine the questions you guys would be asking him.
The NDP said its leader has been home with the flu for the past few days and challenged the accuracy of the government's attendance record keeping.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think those numbers are accurate, but I wouldn't have the, the attendance forms for the leader again. It's important work for all of us, especially as the leader of the opposition, to be on the road, meeting with stakeholders.
MLAs are docked pay for each day that they fail to appear in the legislature. It is acceptable to be away on business or for personal health reasons, so it's rare that anyone loses pay. Wayne Mantika, CTV News, Regina.
Some residents in Regina's Wascana View area are not happy about a proposed study that could result in Prince of Whale Drive being extended to Wascana Parkway. Jacob Carr tells us about the citizens' concerns and the response from the city.
The Wascana View Action Group is saying to city of Regina officials that the proposed feasibility study to extend Prince of Whale's Drive to Wascana Parkway cannot happen because of the permanent conservation easement on the Mikel Wascana Conservation Park.
An encroachment means that there will be no work done on the easement, and as a result, a road going through there would be work on the easement. And working closely with Ducks Unlimited, they've made it quite clear they're not prepared to give permission to go through the reserve.
In a response to the group's concerns, the city of Regina says that the work will only move forward if the project proves feasible and the future budget is approved by city council. The city recognized the concerns raised and will review and update previous assessments to identify any mitigation or design measures required. But the group told CTV News they have talked to several residents in the creeks who think the city needs to quit while they're ahead.
I'm paying $1,500 a month in property taxes for us to do a third study and spend another $300,000, especially given what we have outlined with Ducks Unlimited.
Two previous feasibility studies were completed, according to the group, including one in 2012 that made it clear that the conservation park could not be encroached upon. Another concern, the amount of increased vehicle traffic that the extended road would create in an already highly congested school zone.
Many parents are picking up their children at the same time the school buses are there, and they're taking their children off to extracurricular activities to bring now another 15,000 or 20,000 vehicles through. That's why the concern in the Regina Public School Board is going to express that concern to city council here in the near future.
Hugh and Anne Huntington say discussions with city council are ongoing. Jacob Carr, CTV News, Regina. Community fridges play a big role in helping those less fortunate with food security, but from time to time, these two tools are getting damaged and more recently destroyed by fire. Damian Smith has more.
Tuesday evening, a valuable piece of the north-central neighborhood was lost after the community fridge went up in flames.
Honestly, I was shocked about it, shocked and saddened, just simply because there is a lot of people who, who use this resource in the community.
Indigenous Christian Fellowship is a big supplier of the fridge.
We're cooking meals three times a week, and then we're preparing hampers and, and other things like that for the, for the community as well.
Moving from Toronto in July, Elkharton has been impressed with Regina's willingness to give, especially to those who are homeless.
I don't recall ever seeing anything like this there, and so it seemed like a unique thing that happened in Regina, and I thought, I thought it was, it was interesting that people would just kind of leave stuff out, and it was kind of almost an honor system.
Unfortunately, this is not the only time a community fridge has been set on fire. 15 months ago, the fridge in Cathedral also burned.
It's such a valuable kind of tool in the neighborhood to get food into people's hands. It's this expectation of you're taking just to survive for a couple more days.
Now, there are only two community fridges left in the city.
Obviously, our hope is always to, you know, take this loss and stay strong and keep moving forward, right? I mean, there's a lot of people that rely on the support.
Sadlukowski says they'll look to rebuild another fridge in the same spot. The Regina Fire Department says that the fire is still under investigation. Damian Smith, CTV News, Regina.
All right, we brought in Sabine from the cold yesterday.
Thank you.
Lisa into the, wow, kind of warm temperatures here in the studio. We're in a Pats jersey, Sabine, how come?
Well, the game is coming up on Friday, and it's the season. It's their Christmas-themed game. It's Deck the Rink, so you're going to want to head out. You probably got your Christmas spirit already from seeing the Light the Lights event yesterday, so you're, you still have time to get your tickets for Friday's game at the Brant Center. And you may want to spend some time indoors heading into the weekend because it will be getting quite cool. However, tomorrow, different story, above seasonal temperatures, nothing like today. Today, we didn't quite get to that daytime high of what our average is for this time of year. I'll show you that coming up in just a second here, but also didn't really deal with too much when it comes to active weather. We are starting to see that system making its way in from Alberta, bringing that snow. Most of that looks like it'll be dealing with the southeast. I'll show you that coming up as well. Temperatures right now, yes, we are within that seasonal range, but the wind chill is making it feel a little cooler, especially along the eastern part of the province. I will have all the details, including what the expected temperatures are looking like in the next coming days. Lee?
Thank you, Sabine. The next coming days, like, win the Pats game. It's Friday. A male youth charged with four counts of first-degree murder in connection with a quadruple homicide on the carry of the cattle in the Koda Nation did make a brief virtual court appearance on Wednesday. The youth's identity cannot be revealed under the Criminal Justice Act, but he is one of two males, along with Darius Rossette, facing the same four charges of first-degree murder in the deaths of Tracy Hotomani, Sheldon Cuisance, Shawna Fay, and Terry Jack. They were found dead in a home at Carry the Kettle on February the 4th. The youth's next provincial court appearance is scheduled for December the 11th. A court case regarding a Muscha Police Officer facing charges for allegedly getting into an altercation while on duty has been adjourned. According to Muscha RCMP, officers were called to a home in an area which was part of an ongoing investigation last January. While there, it's alleged one officer unlawfully entered the house during an altercation or during an interaction with its residents, resulting in an altercation and a man, with him and a man inside the home. Now, the defense lawyer for the officer accused made his first court appearance Wednesday at Muscha Provincial Court, asking for more time to review the disclosure. So as a result, the matter will return to court on January the 14th. The province is creating a new law that will allow residents to sue drug traffickers. The Response to Illicit Drugs Act creates a right for the province and people harmed by drug offenders to pursue civil legal action and recover costs associated with illegal drug trafficking and production. The new legislation follows an increase to the maximum fine for certain drug trafficking offenses to $1 million that was done earlier this year. A rally in Saskatoon to support homeless people was calling on the city to do more, but the city there says it cannot have encampments grow across the city. More than two dozen people braved the cold to rally at Civic Square, saying the city needs to build more shelters, open more spaces, and create a centralized area for encampments, but the city is asking residents to keep reporting people that are living in encampments so they can be connected to safe supports and stay out of the cold. The city also says that centralized encampments have not worked in other communities, often becoming unsafe and a target for criminal activity.
Some of the things that you see is like disease outbreak, overdoses, the fires. There's actually a lot of violence, human trafficking. They can turn very unsafe.
If they won't allow it, then we may as well be start counting the people that we're going to lose.
Two overnight warm-up locations have opened downtown as the former STC bus depot and at St. Mary's Church on 20th Street in Saskatoon. Back in Regina, the Cornwall Centre was filled with uniformed police officers today, all for a good cause. The ninth annual Cops and Kids Event took place, a chance for children to get to know a police officer while doing some Christmas shopping with complimentary gift cards. The program is a partnership between the Cornwall Centre and the Regina Police Service. Students are chosen based on need, academic success, athletic accomplishment, and volunteerism. The children enjoyed a limousine ride to the mall, plus a fun day away from their classrooms. It's always nice. Regina Police Service says it's a positive way to spread Christmas cheer and build relationships within the community.
It's important for, you know, kids in our community to know that a police officer is just a person. You can trust them, you can come to them for help, and somebody that you can trust in times of need or in good times, right? That is someone that you can trust and rely upon, and so this is just a fantastic space to create that.
In addition to buying Christmas gifts for family and friends, students were also able to purchase a warm winter coat and boots. Nominations now open for the Regina Citizen of the Year Award presented by CTV. The award is given each year to an individual who exemplifies excellence in community service, and to find out how to nominate someone, guides are available on our website. The deadline to submit your nomination is this Friday, and we will announce this year's recipient on New Year's Eve. After the break, air transit pilots are going on strike just in time for the holidays. Plus, the majority of NATO members agreed to support Ukraine's military. Another labor dispute impacting a Canadian airline could impact travel over the holidays. 99% of unionized air transit pilots have voted to strike, and the flight cancellations could start soon. Annie Bergeron Oliver has the latest.
In exactly one week's time, Air Transit could be forced to start grounding flights as its roughly 700 unionized pilots will be in a position to strike.
A December strike will be catastrophic because capacity is already saturated. Other airlines, like Air Canada and Western, are flying full planes for the holidays.
The threat during the busiest travel time of the year comes nearly a year after talks between the union and airline began. The pilots want pay raises and better job security and say they're tired of working under a contract signed 10 years ago. In a statement, the union says, "Let us be clear, we do not want to strike. However, after nearly a year of slow bargaining and little progress, we urge management to utilize the remaining time and negotiate seriously to avoid operational and flight disruptions."
If anyone knows labor negotiations, I do, and I know that there's a pattern here, and we obviously hope they get a deal.
The airline is confident a deal can be found, saying in a statement, "Although this is a common step in the collective bargaining process and does not mean that a strike will be initiated, we remain fully committed at the bargaining table and aim to reach a tentative agreement without labor dispute." Aviation analysts say the prospect of a Christmas slowdown puts pressure on a company already facing financial troubles.
I don't think Transit's in a position right now of being able to accept a financially disruptive situation like a strike, so they will settle.
Air Transit says its operations are currently running as normal. Either side must give 72 hours notice of a strike or a lockout. Annie Bergeron Oliver, CTV News, Ottawa.
U.S. tariffs of forced layoffs at Algaama Steel in Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario, but what about the cross-the-border at Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan? It's a place that prides itself on having a bond with its northern neighbor. Heather Wright looking into whether that city is also feeling the pain.
The Sault Ste. Marie International Bridge spans four and a half kilometers, connecting the two Saults on either side of the St. Mary's River. Two cities, two countries facing similar challenges.
Definitely, there's, there's been a pinch.
Jennifer Riataire owns The Mole Hole, a shop that caters to both locals and visitors, though fewer Canadians are stopping by these days.
I'm sure the tariffs did not help, but I did already notice a drop because of the exchange rate.
Riataire has been in business for more than a decade, but in the last year, she's watched as her margins have been squeezed thanks to tariffs.
Some of our vendors do try as well to absorb it for a while, but ultimately, they pass it on to us. We absorb what we can, but we also can't absorb everything. There's just not enough room for it, and so everybody pays for tariffs.
Well, tariffs are most acutely felt on imported hard goods. Prices have also risen at the grocery store.
Everything is going higher, and we're doing okay, but I think there's a lot less fortunate people that have to really struggle, really struggle, and I don't know how they make ends meet.
It's a struggle Dan Travis Anute is trying to help with. He's a barber in Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario, and is offering discounted pricing to all Algauma employees as his way to give back.
It's the least I can do, and then a little bit of affordability to offer these people dignity because they'll be looking for jobs and there'll be, a lot of people are just going to be in a bad way.
An increase in social service needs was expected here in Sault Ste. Marie before the layoffs, a need that is only expected to grow now. Heather Wright, CTV News, Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario.
As the U.S. tries to broker a deal to halt Russia's invasion of Ukraine, NATO Secretary General says it's important Moscow doesn't get the wrong impression.
Ukraine continues to show incredible resilience. Putin believes he can outlast us, but we are not going anywhere. Today is yet another clear sign that he is wrong. We are strengthening our support for Ukraine and increasing pressure on Russia.
The Secretary General says two-thirds of NATO members have committed to a program aimed at supporting Ukraine's defense needs. Canadian Foreign Affairs Minister Anita Anand says Canada is chipping in about combined $235 million as Ottawa does ramp up work on NATO priorities.
This meeting that we had today of all NATO foreign ministers was an opportunity for Canada to reaffirm our commitment to securing the Arctic, to reaffirm our intention to meet the 2% of GDP target, to strengthen the eastern flank, and of course, to support Ukraine.
Global Affairs Canada says the government has committed nearly $22 billion in funding for Ukraine since Russia invaded the country back in 2022. In the Middle East, Hamas says it's handed over the body of one of the last two deceased October 7 hostages after it was found in Gaza. The armed wing of the Hamas-allied Palestinian Islamic Jihad Group says it found a body after carrying out a search in northern Gaza. This comes after Israel says remains handed over yesterday did not belong to a hostage. The handover of the final bodies would complete a key condition in the U.S.-backed ceasefire. Israel has promised to open the Rafah Crossing between Gaza and Egypt in the coming days in a sign that it is moving ahead with parts of the peace plan. The death toll in last week's devastating high-rise complex fire in Hong Kong has risen to 159 as mourners continue to gather at the scene.
I think the entire population in Hong Kong would love to have the truth and the justice to be told.
Neighbors laid flowers at the memorial site as police continue to search through the charred buildings. Nearly 30 people remain missing, and recovery efforts could take weeks. 15 people have been arrested on suspicion of manslaughter. 12 have been arrested in a corruption investigation. Authorities say substandard plastic mesh and insulation foam used during renovation work fueled the rapid spread of the blaze. Coming up on day three of the 12 strays of Christmas, we introduce you to a kitten named Potato.
All right, welcome back. We're going to take a look at what you can expect for your temperatures heading into tonight, and, well, for the next seven days. Let's focus on right now, though, as we take a look outside through our sky cam. Overlooking City Hall where we were last night for the Light the Lights. The trees are all lit. It may not look it through in terms of winter wonderland type of status. We do have some more snow coming, but the temperatures certainly feel more like winter-like conditions. Today, we did have a cooler start to the day, but this is where we're seeing those abnormal temperature trends where we're actually, instead of usually seeing a cooldown heading into tonight, we're actually going to see those temperatures warming up because we have an above-seasonal day expected for tomorrow. So currently sitting at minus 13 with the wind chill at about minus 21. We didn't really see, as I mentioned, the snow coming through parts of the province, but we are now starting to see the system coming through from Alberta. Looks like it's actually going to be staying within the southeast around the parkland area, and of course, parts of the northern, northern part of the province. Does not look like it's a lot of snow, but throughout the next couple of days, especially in the overnights, we will see more snow coming through, and I'll show you that right now as we take a look at what's to come heading into this evening. So still mostly cloudy conditions heading into this evening. That's where we see that system come through again. Most of that snow is going to be overnight heading into first thing in the morning. You can still see trails of the end of that system just along the eastern border there, and then we have more snow coming in, starting into the Lloydminster area first thing tomorrow morning as well. Again, a mostly cloudy day tomorrow, but warmer than average, and I'll show you that coming up as well. We will see some more snow coming through the southwest later tomorrow afternoon, and it again, looks like the southwest, we'll be seeing the, the bulk of the snow again returning Thursday night. So tomorrow night, we'll see more of that snow returning, again, sticking to that southwest corner, Swift Current Maple Creek, seeing most of that snow. And in terms of how much we can expect, I'll show you that in just a second, but again, by the time we head into Friday, starting Friday, another cloudy day expected as well. We won't see that sun return until we get into about Saturday, but even Saturday morning, you can see more of that snow coming through the southwest. So exactly how much? Well, I can't tell you exactly because these measurements are a little bit, a little bit off just because of depending on where those measurement stations can be, either if it's on flat surface or, or a little bit more elevated. But the southwest, they're expecting anywhere between three to four centimeters of snow. The southeast could see some trace amounts, but two to three centimeters expected in most of southern Saskatchewan, up to about one centimeter for Saskatoon, and then similar numbers even all the way up in the north, up to about three centimeters of snow. So that's between now and to Saturday morning. Temperatures tomorrow looking quite nice, not just above seasonal, but actually some areas will climb above zero. Zero for North Battle for tomorrow, cloudy, minus two with a mix of sun and cloud for Saskatoon, and minus three and cloudy for York. In the southwest, climbing to plus one for Maple Creek tomorrow. Could see that scattered snow, but also could be just some snow showers, so a little bit of wet snow coming through the area as well. Minus one for Swift Current, zero and cloudy for Moose Jaw. Southeast seeing similar temperatures, zero for Asinaboy and Estaman, and plus one for Weyburn. For Regina, minus 14, so within that average low for tonight. Wind chill could be into about the minus 22, minus 23 tonight, and then tomorrow warming to minus one, actually could even climb up to zero. And of course, cloudy conditions tomorrow, winds up to 35, could actually see those winds gusting in the morning up to about 50 kilometers an hour before we see those winds calm. By Friday, we're back into average range zero, excuse me, cloudy minus nine, but then Friday night into the weekend, we could see some colder, frigid temperatures, especially with the wind chill values, minus 19 on Saturday, mainly sunny, minus 12, a mix of sun and cloud on Sunday, and then as we head into your new work week, there Monday, mostly cloudy, and back into that seasonal range of minus six, but Monday and Tuesday, expecting winds picking up to about 50 again. Minus five, mostly cloudy Tuesday, by Wednesday, minus 10, and mostly cloudy. It's our favorite time of the show, 12 strays of Christmas. We're on day three, and I'm just so excited to get straight to day three. Candice from the Regina Humane Society is joining us. Candice, how are you?
I am lovely. I mean, I'm hanging out with a kitten, I can't complain.
Okay, yeah, we, we had a chance to catch up right before we came on air here, and let's just get straight to the little furry, adorable, adoptable you have with you, Candice.
Of course, so this little sweetheart, who is very wiggly right now, this is Potato, and she is an eight-week-old little girl, and she was actually born here at the shelter. Her mom came in as a stray, and then she surprised us with five very cute peanuts, who then proceeded to go into foster care, and they were absolutely spoiled rotten, and they've come back just so sweet. They are just such nice little kittens. You can't really tell right now because she's a bit of a wiggle mom, but she's been noted to be the cuddly one of her family, and I see it. She's just a little bit overwhelmed here right now with all the camera and everything.
Well, I was going to say she definitely is coming across as a little cuddly one. So what kind of home or what kind of family do we want Potato to go to?
Yeah, so I think because she's so young, she could really adjust to any household. She is a little bit anxious in new situations sometimes, so she kind of tries to hide away, but I think if she has a family that's willing to be patient with her, at least for the first few days while she settles in, she will do absolutely wonderful in any home, right? She's not looking very impressive to me.
So Candice, you did say that Potato was part of a litter of five. If Potato seems to go quick, which I feel like she may, are there more from the litter available, or is, or there are other cats available?
There's lots of kittens available, but there are four others in the litter of this one. Their names are Panier, Lentil, Coconut, and Tomato. They are all so sweet and so darn cute. Oh, my heart.
Okay, well, naturally, I have to ask the obvious question. Where do we come up with the names, especially with them being born at the Humane Society?
Yeah, so what we do is we actually reach out to our staff to, you know, kind of give us ideas about names, and then we have a name list. We move towards having a list because, you know, there are some names that can be a little bit offensive, and it's not necessarily that we meant it that way, it just maybe is that we weren't aware that it was offensive. So we've had people phone us and, and kind of give us a little bit of an earful before. So we're just extra cautious to make sure that they're not offensive names like Potato. You are so upset with me.
Well, we need to get Potato forever home. Where do they need to go? What do they need to know to take Potato home?
Yeah, so we are open for adoption viewing from noon until 6 every day, except for Mondays. So you are welcome to come by anytime, even if it's just for a visit to say hello to these cute little monsters. Contrary to popular belief, they love just having people walk by and say hello to them. You're so upset with me. So, you know, feel free to come by, and if there's one that catches your eye, we have an incredible adoption team that would love to help you find the perfect match for your house and help you meet with one that speaks to your heart.
Perfect, well... Well, we'll let Potato have a rest now. Hopefully, we find her a forever home, and we'll check back in with you tomorrow for Day Four.
Sounds good. Hopefully, somebody less wiggly.
Thanks, Candice.
Thank you.
12 Strays of Christmas brought to you by Flooring Superstore. Quality flooring at great prices. Still ahead, the leader in CFL receiving yards, Keon Hatcher, will not be hitting the free agent market. Wardrobe consideration in part by Colin O'Brien Men's Shop. No word yet on players like Trevor Harris, but the Saskatchewan Roughriders did re-sign a practice roster player today, running back Marcus Major Jr. 20, Mordecai gives it up. Major touchdown Sooners. Major Jr. spent his collegiate career at the Universities of Oklahoma and Minnesota, went undrafted in the 2025 NFL Draft, but did attend training camp with the Baltimore Ravens. Riders also did sign an American receiver, Colin Brunstein from Illinois College. As for other teams, the B.C. Lions re-signed the CFL's top receiver as far as yards were concerned last season. Keon Hatcher to a two-year extension. 2025 All-Star selection. Hatcher picked up 102 catches for 1,688 yards and nine touchdowns. Has played his entire career on the West Coast. Well, don't look now, but the Swift Current Broncos have the worst record in the WHL. He steals it right back from him. Onto the stick of crap, back for Toll. Gives it to McCaffrey, he scores! Last night, the Wenatchee Wild scored four times in the second period, handing the Broncos a 7-2 setback, their sixth straight loss. Sawyer Dingman and Trey Wilkie did score for Swift Current. Broncos back at it again tonight against the Tri-City Americans. And in the SJHL, we'll check in on them. A pair of brothers with a turning point last night as the Weyburn Red Wings were able to beat the Yorkton Terriers in overtime. Luke Schrader done it. Two goals, including a winner in overtime. His brother Deion added another. Wings won 3-2. Weyburn is just one point behind Flynn Flon for top spot in the SJHL, but the Wings do have a game in hand. As for the Terriers, they did earn a point, moving them into a tie for sixth in the standings. Also last night, Nipewin, they knocked off Larrange 3-2. Still ahead, reports of unethical elk hunting across the province.
Welcome back. Let's take a look at your rural forecast for tomorrow. An above-seasonal day, some areas even climbing above zero tomorrow. But then we will see those temperatures come back down into that seasonal range by the weekend. So let's take a look at what you can expect. There will be mostly cloudy conditions, except for areas like Watchers could see some peaks of sunshine. Also, areas expecting to see some of that light snowfall coming through the area. Minus three in flurries for Win Yard. Cloudy minus seven for Hudson Bay. Minus one for Lloydminster and some snow through the area. Zero with some snow for Kindersley, and minus two for Meadow Lake and Spiritwood, expecting cloudy conditions there. When we get closer to the southern border, that's where we will see some warmer temperatures continuing. Plus one in snow for Leader and Maple Creek. Zero in snow for Asinaboy and over in the southeast. Minus one in cloudy for Broadview Carlisle. Minus four for Canora, and minus one for Lumsden Pilot Butte with cloudy conditions there as well. If we take a closer look at Borden tomorrow, warming up to about minus one with some light snow expected, about less than a centimeter throughout the day, and then expecting some more snow coming through into the evening where we will see the temperatures dip back down into seasonal range. So minus 14 for tomorrow night with a wind chill during the day of about minus five and into the evening by about minus 20.
Fire departments that battled unprecedented summer wildfires received special recognition at the Legislative Building as Wayne Mantika tells us close to 50 fire departments from across Saskatchewan and Manitoba were awarded the premier's commendation.
Hundreds of firefighters from across Saskatchewan and parts of Manitoba answered the call to protect lives and property as wildfires raged through Saskatchewan's north. Many say they have never experienced anything like it.
It was a little more intense than we had seen. We don't have that kind of forest around home, so it was definitely a little different, but definitely inexperienced, to say the least.
Nearly 50 fire departments that took part in the forest fire effort were awarded the premier's commendation at the legislature.
To recognize people that had stepped up in the face of adversity, danger, stepped up with great courage to help other Saskatchewan residents.
Many of the fire departments recognized are comprised of volunteers who were dispatched to where help was needed most.
We were initially actually dispatched to Pelican Arrows. And when we arrived, we were redirected to the town of Creighton. At that time, Diner Beach is actually on fire.
The firefighters appreciated the recognition.
It's fantastic. It's so nice to see the premier come and really talk about everything that happened and to thank everybody individually on behalf of their fire department for helping. And I mean, you can't ask for anything better.
The NDP believe the government must be better prepared for future fire seasons. It has introduced legislation calling for a strategy to avoid wildfires. The government says a strategy already exists. Wayne Mantika, CTV News, Regina.
Saskatchewan Wildlife Federation says it has received dozens of complaints about unethical hunting in recent weeks. As CTV Stacy Heinz tells us, it comes after an extra elk hunt that was faced with controversy wraps up. And a warning, some viewers may find some of the images disturbing in this story.
These photos posted to social media show two elk shot and left in the Spiritwood area. Sask Tip says conservation officers believe the shooter fired into a herd and may not have realized they killed multiple animals. The Saskatchewan Wildlife Federation says shooting and abandoning an animal is unacceptable.
We would argue in that case you were into poaching case and not a hunting case. We class that as waste of game, so unacceptable, both from a legal and ethical point of view.
During the antlerless elk hunt, which ran from November 23rd to the 27th in the southern half of the province, the Wildlife Federation says it received roughly 20 complaints per day about animals being shot and left. Executive Director Todd Smith believes some hunters may not have been familiar with regulations and calls the situation concerning.
It's a waste of our resources. The resources in the province belong to all the citizens of the province. So not only potentially for recruitment later on for future wildlife populations, but also the meat and the resource going to waste is a large concern for us.
In a statement to CTV News, the Ministry of Environment says the antlerless hunt was introduced to address crop and property damage caused by high elk numbers. Now that the hunt has wrapped up, the ministry says harvest surveys will help assess harvest levels and landowner access and will guide future wildlife management plans. It adds conservation officers continue enforcement throughout the season and will respond to violations as needed. Smith says he understands landowners' concerns but believes the hunt should have been designed differently and says Saskatchewan needs ethical, science-driven management to ensure wildlife is harvested responsibly and sustainably. Stacy Heinz, CTV News, Saskatoon.
Back on Tuesday, the NDP joined a group of farmers to call on the government to crack down on illegal drainage. NDP MLA Erica Ritchie criticized the government, saying the SAS party overstates the amount of Saskatchewan wetlands and enables drainage without recourse for landowners. Agricultural Minister Darrell Harrison defended the policy, saying it involved more than 80 stakeholder groups and balances resiliency with economic growth. Some producers from the Yorkton area say the Water Security Agency allows widespread illegal wetland destruction. They added that the WSA doesn't require monitoring or water quality standards for draining projects.
But today, these agencies are being used to drain large areas of the province in order to increase cultivation for some farmers and bring illegally drained wetlands into compliance. This is not why these policies were created.
CTV reached out to the WSA for comment but did not hear back before broadcast. All right, let's go to the farm markets. Street price of canola is down $8.10, the $567.82 per ton.